Welcome to, I'm sorry, you ready Bob?
... by the Ventura County Star, by Supervisor Kathy Long and by several other respected local officials who know me and know the work that I can do. I look forward to talking about the issues tonight. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Kevin Kildee. Kevin, one and a half minutes.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be here. I want to thank the League of Women's Voters for holding this. I'm Kevin Kildee. I'm married and I'm the proud father of two lovely daughters. I'm the owner of Bob Kildee Clothing, who was, actually started a retail clothing business in our city in 1954. And Camarillo was a pretty small town back in those days. Service has always been my family's motto. We've been public servants for many, many decades. I have the ability to navigate complex issues and reach consensus. However, my work is not done. We're in the midst of an expansion of St. John's Hospital. We're building new projects on Ventura Boulevard. We're actually upgrading our streets and infrastructure. I apologize for the inconvenience for everybody that drives a car, but it's like sausage, it's a little messy, but once it gets finished, it's going to be really, really good. Our city has a AAA credit rating, which is one of the few cities in the state of California that has that. I believe in continuing our funding for our public safety so we can remain one of the safest towns, not only in the county and the state, but also in the country. I look forward to answering all of your questions and I work for you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jamison Lingle.
Thank you. My name is Jamison Lingle. I'm running for city council because I want to help make this the best Camarillo for everyone. To make this the best Camarillo, we need to work to reduce our traffic congestion, secure our water future, and protect open space. As a professional policy educator and advocate, I have effectively worked to influence policy that has benefited seniors, people with disabilities, the environment, and now I'd like to help work on policy that can benefit you. I'm particularly proud to be the only candidate who's been endorsed by the leaders of SOAR because I'm the only candidate who's been actively involved in fighting urban sprawl. In fact, I'm spending a significant portion of the money from my own campaign to educate voters on the difference between the real SOAR measures and the measure designed to get rid of SOAR. Along with my wife Suzanne, a local nurse at both Pleasant Valley and St. John's Hospital, we're raising a two-year-old daughter with another one on the way. I'm proud to say that I've been endorsed by Supervisor Kathy Long, Merrill Bergy, the Camarillo representative for SOAR, Luis Roberts, President of Save Canoe Hill Creek, as well as a number of other folks. To me, this election is about saving our open space more than anything else. We have to be careful to only approve smart growth and we can't do smart growth when the future of our traffic congestion and our water security is so uncertain. So I'm asking you to vote yes on Measure C, yes on Measure J, no on Measure F, and yes on Jamison Lingle for city council and let's save Canoe Hill Creek together.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Matt Lorimer.
Good evening. My name is Matt Lorimer. I've lived in this community for 20 years. The reason I'm running is I care and I put the needs of the citizens first. As you know, I've attended city council meetings for over eight years. I have a passion for it, I care about it, and the main reason I'm running because we're here to solve issues. Tonight, you're going to ask yourself a very important question. Are we better off than we were four years ago? Well, let's look at a couple of issues here. Crime. Crime is up 18%. Assaults are up 33%. That is unacceptable. When we spent 47% of our budget and $16 million, that's not acceptable. Number two, congestion on the 101 freeway. That is unacceptable. When you drive and you go to work and you come home and you have to spend an hour and 15 minutes or longer on the freeway and you want to get home to your family, that's unacceptable. SOAR. I'm 100% in favor of SOAR. I'm in favor of Measure J and C. And since we're talking about SOAR, I was the only candidate that spoke up in this forum when it came up to the Canoe Hill Project. I was the only person, and remind yourselves of that, when you talk about these issues. Tonight, you have many choices. This is going to be the most expensive election you've seen. It's not about how many flyers in the mail, it's not about how many endorsements. The only endorsement I need is the people of Camarillo. I'm here because I care and I want to make a difference in this community. And tonight, we'll talk about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up with Bill Little.
Good evening. I'm Bill Little. I'm completing my first term on the Camarillo City Council and running for reelection. As many of you will remember, I have served you as city manager for 11 years during the time when city Camarillo was struggling to get back on its feet financially after some devastating financial investments. Today, unlike many other cities, Camarillo is physically sound. Much of this is due to the planning and studies which we undertook to track projects such as the Camarillo Premium Outlets and the Target Center, which generates substantial tax revenues. We also established an investment committee to oversee city finances. And while I was city manager, the city was awarded a AAA bond rating, which Councilman Kildee alluded to. We still have that today. We are fortunate to have many wonderful nonprofit organizations serving our community and I've been involved with a few of them. I've served on the Board of Directors and as the president of the Camarillo Boys and Girls Club, the Camarillo Ranch Foundation, the Friends of the Camarillo Library, and the St. John's Pleasant Valley Hospital Board. I was also on the committees to plan the new high school, Rancho Campania. I have lived in Camarillo for 28 years. I've been involved either in city government or helping the community organizations the entire time. My achievements are a public record, which I'm very proud. I intend to continue that record to the end of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll begin the next question with you, Matt. We're going to start with you. Matt, the question is about public safety and contracting out. Currently, the city of Camarillo contracts out police services to the Sheriff's Department. The author of this question says, "I think this decision is due for a review. Like to know where each candidate stands on the policy of having the Sheriff's Department provide police rather than the city having its own police force." This person mentions that they've experienced bureaucratic nightmares with the Sheriff's Department for non-emergency situations. Matt, where do you stand on having the police department continue to contract with the Sheriff's Department?
I think that's good, but the most important issue we probably need to ask tonight is, you know, when you get your ballot in the mail, that's my number one priority. I have priorities, so take a look at the ballot. You know, I was here on March 22 in that auditorium and that's the police report. When I got here, the police department read the report and, again, crime was up 18%, assaults were up 33%. You know what the mayor said here, Mr. Morgan? He said, "It's not as bad as it appears. If one person commits four crimes, it's not as bad as it appears." Then, the city manager said, "It's just another normal cycle. Ask the park district, $10,000 in damage. Ask the school district, $25,000 in damage. Ask..." I can't remember the other one, but the bottom line is, is I have the only solution. We need a police substation, a bicycle patrol, and we need monthly meetings with the police chief. That's a solution that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, same question to you about public safety. Would you continue to contract with the Sheriff's Department or create your own police force?
Yes, I would continue to favor contracting with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. I think they are doing a terrific job in Camarillo. Fiscally, I am not in favor of the city of Camarillo having its own city police department with the additional burdens and the fiscal constraints that that represents. We have issues currently because of Prop 47 and the impacts that that has had relative to release of offenders. And so we have an uptick, moderate uptick, in crime in certain categories. And what I would like to do, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to the city council, is explore with the council, manager, and the police chief ways to try to address those. One way is to bring in a couple of, is to explore bringing in a couple of additional support, sworn personnel, and apply them in specific issue areas that the Sheriff's Department would provide to us. So, that's the answer to the question.
Thank you. Bill, same question to you. Do you support continuing to contract out with the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, I've had a lot of experience with dealing with police departments throughout my career, and I will tell you that the Ventura County Sheriff's Department is one of the most professional, well-trained departments that I've had the pleasure to be involved with. They do a great job. Now, the idea that we can stop crime from occurring simply because we have more police officers doesn't... You just have to look and read the headlines every day about how much crime is increasing across the country. It doesn't matter where you are. And we have our share of it. Prop 47, as was mentioned, has turned some people back on the street that probably shouldn't have been, and they continue to work their way. I support going ahead and keeping our Sheriff's Department well-funded, well-equipped, and we are also, one other additional idea is that we will be funding another patrol unit on the west side of the city in the next budget year.
Stop you there. Okay, Kevin, you're up next. What's your position about the Sheriff's Department?
I totally, totally support the current sheriff with the county. They do a tremendous job. I have a retail business and I have had several, several calls of service for them. They've been always professional, on time, and they do their business to the utmost benefit to all Camarillo residents. I have very, very few complaints about the police situation in Camarillo. We've had tremendous commanders here, all of them, or some of the best and the brightest that they have to offer here. It's way less money than if we had it on. The politics stays out of it, which is really good, and they're tremendously highly trained. For instance, the body cameras, they waited until other departments implemented them and they did their research, thoroughly researched, and got the best deal for their money. They're very professional. We looked at this when I first was elected here, very, 20 years ago, and we decided to stay with Ventura County Sheriff's Department, and we're lucky that we did.
Thank you. Jamison, we'll wrap up with you.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page. The Ventura County Sheriff's Department, from my experience, is accessible and proactive. He's talking about the cameras. They did that before they actually had problems here in Ventura County. So I think that foresight really says a lot about Sheriff Dean and Camarillo Chief of Police Monica McGrath has been extremely accessible and easy to talk to. So, I'm sorry that someone had a bad experience. What I would say is that I absolutely support the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, but if I was your councilman, I hope that you would be able to come talk with me and if I could act as a conduit between you and the Sheriff's Department, I would be happy to do that.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Kevin Kildee. Kevin, let's talk about seniors. Would you agree or disagree that the Camarillo City Council should have a policy to build a first-class community senior center, similar to the ones in Simi Valley or Thousand Oaks? So tell us about your position on a senior center, and with the rest of the time, you can tell us about your views on seniors.
Well, we're working towards that. At this particular point, the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District is in the midst of getting a plan together for this. We've had some very preliminary discussions with this. We're very fortunate in Camarillo that we have the healthcare district, we have Leisure Village, and those have a lot of public outreach for our seniors here. As most of us know here, that the senior population is growing here. I'm getting closer and closer to that age. Proud to say I'm 60, and we'll continue to work for that. I hope that someday that we can do it, but we need to plan it. We need to make sure that the programs are not duplicated. We have to make sure that everybody has a say in this. Once you build a senior citizen center, it's here for a long, long time. So we want to make sure that when we do get one, that it's going to be state-of-the-art, and I'm very, very confident at some point that we will have one.
Thank you. We're, Jamison, you're up next on the question about the senior center.
Thank you, yeah. I absolutely believe that we should support a senior center. Not only that, Camarillo is the only city in Ventura County that does not support our local senior center. So that is critical. The other thing that I think is really important, and I haven't heard anyone else talk about, but when I was calling for SOAR, telling people to show up at the library to sign our signatures, is I talked to an 85-year-old Korean War veteran who's blind, and he goes to the VA in Oxnard for his medical appointments. So when he goes from Camarillo to Oxnard for his medical appointments, this gentleman gets dropped off at the edge of Camarillo. He has to wait for an hour window to be picked up and taken to the VA. So if I'm on the city council, I'm going to push to make sure that seniors and people with disabilities can get to their medical appointments in Ventura and Thousand Oaks without being transferred and dropped off on the edge of city. So, I've worked for over 10 years in policy advocacy. Most of that has been for seniors and people with disabilities. I've worked with the Ventura County, the Ventura area of aging and the Ventura County Transportation Agencies on these issues for seniors.
Thank you. Tony, same question to you. Do you support a first-class community center and you on seniors?
Yes, I do support a first-class senior center, and the way to fund it is either general, is through city funds or what I've been advocating, which is to have the city council consider taking a slice of the transient occupancy tax that the city collects each and every year. This last year was $2.3 million, and dedicate a slice of that TOT for the Recreation and Park District. But I want to reshape the conversation just slightly. It's my view that this city council has been too passive and has not engaged collaboratively with the other public agencies in Camarillo, including the Recreation and Park District. I don't want this city council to sit back. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected, I want this city council to affirmatively collaborate on a needs assessment, on the need for a senior center, and other senior issues with the Recreation and Park District. I think we have every reason to expect as citizens that our council exercises leadership, steps forward, and affirmatively works with other agencies, including Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, rather than waits for issues to come up.
Thank you. Bill, same question to you, Bill, as far as the first-class senior center.
About three years ago, at my insistence, the city council sat down with the board of the Park and Rec Commission, and we discussed issues. Certainly among those were the recreation center. And at that time, the city said, "We will be willing to contribute to that when we, when you have a plan of action, some plans as to what you want to build, how much you want to, how much it's going to cost, and what you think we should be involved with." They are now getting themselves organized to do that very thing, which is to develop a plan of action. And so we've been waiting for three years for that to happen. The housing, the senior citizen problem is more than just this recreation. We've got 20%, our 65 and older populations is approaching 20% of the population. We need to take that into account when we do talk about housing and other issues.
Thank you, Bill. And Matt, we'll wrap up the question about a first-class community center with you.
You know, I know about this issue because I've been attending city council meetings and I've been attending park district meetings. It's disgraceful. Every city gives about a quarter of a million dollars to build a senior center, okay? Far as seniors, 69,000 people live in the city of Camarillo. 30% are seniors, that's about 20,000. I've been there. When there was a meeting here two years ago, let me just be frank with you. Dan LaRotta was here. He said to Bruce Thing, "Hey, I want to schedule meetings because Mary's coming on board." And he said, "You can't walk and chew gum." That's how they treat the seniors. How many times, you notice they never said here, how many times they go visit their senior center? It's disgraceful. You know something? You pay taxes for years. I've been fighting this. It's unacceptable. You know something? When a woman goes to use a restroom in a wheelchair, she can barely make it in there. That's disgraceful. You know something? They can build a senior center. It needs to happen, but you know something? They need to start relationships. They can't keep waiting. It needs to happen. So it's the number one, it's one of my major priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to begin the next question with Bill, and we're going to talk about city reserves. And what are your plans for this? And I believe the city reserves are like 14 million or 20 million, perhaps, you know, Bill? What are your views about the city's reserves and how they should be used?
The city has, for many years, had a policy of funding reserves at 100% or more of its required amount in any one fund. For example, the general fund has a 100% funding policy. We now have a general fund funded at, with reserves of about 150%. So there's a lot of money out there that is sitting in funds that I think should be evaluated and determined to be used for other purposes. We need a consultant to come in, look at the funds, and decide what is a prudent level. I don't, I certainly believe that every fund needs to be funded at least 100% of its necessary value, but some of these funds are 200% or more.
Thank you. Matt, what are your position about the city's reserves? What's your plan?
Well, when we talk reserves, let's go look at the firehouse. It's been sitting there for 20 years, okay? You want to talk about money. They bought it for 150,000, then they bought the park next to it for $1 million. 20 years, we've been waiting for the city council because they wanted to open a restaurant. Then they put it on the market for six months. They put a sign on it that says, "We want it for a restaurant." Then they took it off. Then, we've been three months, basically negotiations to sell the thing, and you wonder why things don't get done. You know, you talk about money. You know something? We just talked about a senior center. Why don't we do the first thing we need to take care of? The seniors need a new senior center. I think it's going to cost between $5 and $8 million. I was saying that it's important that we take care of the things in this community, but you know something? Let's go back to that issue. That issue is a priority. The senior center is probably the most needed thing that's needed in this community. So let's start with that. They have plenty of reserves. That's the major issue, I think.
Thank you. Kevin, what is your position on the reserves? What's your plan?
One of the things I'm most proud of, what a concept. We actually have a city that have reserves here. Unheard of in our county and certainly unheard of in a lot of cities in our state here. Yes, we do have 100% reserve policy here, but we also have a very aggressive capital improvement projects. And if you look at what we're doing with our infrastructure and our streets now, go around the county and see if any other city is doing anything close to what we're doing. And just wait until you see some of the capital projects that we have budgeted here. We're always willing to look this. I have to remind everybody that a lot of these funds are encumbered. That means that the money's there. We're not going to spend them every year, but we can roll them over to the next year for other expenditures and other ideas and other projects that may come to our fruition here and that we might want to fund. And we've got the money to do it, and ladies and gentlemen, that is very rare in this business.
Thank you. Jamison, what is your position on the city's reserves? Your plans?
I think a lot of people have complaints about Camarillo in different aspects, but our reserves is really one of the best things that we have going for us, and I think the city has done a good job with that. I think we need to use some of that money to invest in things like the senior center. I think we need to improve our transit. I need to think, we need to invest in Old Town. And I certainly will be really aggressive in trying to improve our city in a lot of ways, but my number one priority among those things will be making sure that we maintain our reserves, and I, I'll work to defend that.
Thank you. Tony, we'll wrap up with you on the reserves.
Well, we have very healthy city reserves. As of June 30 of 2015, under the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the reserves totaled about $175 million. $115 million of that was in life and about $62 million in government securities. I give great credit to the city for doing that and for being fiscally responsible. The city has a revenue debt only of about $25.6 million and has no general obligation debt. So, we're in relatively good shape financially. I have two specific areas of focus, though, if I'm lucky enough to be on the council. The first is the continuing transfer of general fund monies, transfers from the general fund to various operating funds for the city, including the Lighting, Landscaping, Maintenance Fund. I have long-term sustainability questions about that practice. And last year, those transfers were about $7.5 million. Secondly, our pension liability. Our annual pension expense is about $1.76 million. I'd like to look at that and examine that and see whether we can bring that down somewhat.
Thank you. I was way off when I was guessing 20 million, wasn't I? Wow. All right, Jamison, we'll start with you on transportation tax. So there's Measure AA, which is to pass a half-cent sales tax to fund transportation in Ventura County. So the question is, do you support Measure AA? And if you do, why is it justified for 20% to go to the 101 and 50% to the cities? And also, whether you support it or not, what do you think should happen with the money that comes into the city?
Sure. Traffic congestion is so important because not only does it affect the quality of life for people that live here, but the EDC says that Camarillo and Ventura County's economic future, the number one economic threat to our future is traffic congestion in Camarillo and Ventura County. So personally, what I think needs to happen with that money, and I think is part of the plan, is we need to widen the bridges over the freeway. There's two places where it creates a massive pinch. We need auxiliary lanes so that people that live in the city can get on and off of the freeway really quickly. I live on Arneals, I live off of Arneals. Sometimes I go to Target. I get on the freeway, I get on the freeway and I'm like, "Why didn't I take daily to get there?" And it's, I'm just sitting on the freeway. So, I do support AA because that is the only plan that will widen the bridges, that'll create an auxiliary lane, and that's why I support it. In terms of why, well, I'm going to stop there.
Okay, thank you. Bill, same question to you. Do you support Measure AA on the transportation? Do you feel it's justified? And how would you use the money?
Well, I'm on the, represent the city on the Ventura County Transportation Commission, and we had a number of study sessions on this, and I've come to the conclusion, there's just no, nothing alternative is, there's no alternative that we can rely on to get us to where we should be. As has been said, the highway is not only just taking traffic, but it also is carrying the commerce of this area, is through this area and around it. And we, we need that free flow of traffic as much as possible. The city, one of the reasons why the city is, or the breakdown of the money is as it is, is that $600 million is set aside for the freeways of improving the 118 and the 101. Now, people say, "Well, that's not enough money." Obviously, it's not. But you've got to remember, that's the local share, and the federal government will, will add about, at least double that for that.
Thank you, Bill. Matt, same question to you. Do you support Measure AA? How do you think the funds should be used?
Well, you just heard Kevin said they're redoing your streets. I cannot support Measure AA.
Actually, Matt, I don't think Kevin has answered this question yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Just to, but I'll ask Roger to go ahead and reset the time. We'll let you start over. And so the question is, do you support Measure AA? And how do you think that the money should be spent if it passes?
No, I do not support Measure AA, and here's the reason why. You heard before Kevin said the streets are getting done. Measure AA, let's go with the facts. It's only 20% for the freeway, 50% for the city. It's a 30-year tax. Now, when you look on their site, Ventura County Transportation Committee, on there, they said they're going to improve sound walls and flood runoff from water. You know, this is a tax for 30 years, and if you look at, if you look at this tax, any given time, this committee, two-thirds of it can basically let the public know in 45 days and raise it. There is no need to add a tax like this. Only 20% in the freeway. What do you think you could do with 20%? It's like, if I gave you a dollar and I said you could only spend 20%, I mean, where could you spend that? I mean, the point is, if Howard Jarvis was alive, he would be upset. This is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. It'd be different if it was 80% for five years, then we'd be talking of something different. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tony.
Two aspects to this question. First of all, I do support Measure AA. I think it is the only, first of all, I'm fiscally conservative. I don't like sales tax or other tax increases, but it is the only responsible means, right now in 2016, to address the issues of the 101 mess. What Measure AA will do is create both direct dollars in sales tax revenue, as well as additional leveraged dollars, to go toward planning and implementing improvements that we desperately need on 101. Anyone who was caught on 101 during the day, and myself isn't, I'm included in that, I would hope, could stipulate that it is a very inefficient way to move people, goods, and services. In fact, it's not moving people, or goods, or services during the Camarillo crawl. We need those funds. It's not responsible to wait until the next election cycle. I would have liked to cut a different deal, but we're past that, and we need to act, and we need to act now, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, we'll wrap up with you on this question. As far as Measure AA, if it passes, where would you spend the money?
Ladies and gentlemen, in my opinion, this is our only hope to try to get our traffic at least marginally improved. I collect sales tax. I know how burdensome that can be, but remember, it's 7.5%. It's going to go up to 8%. The average Ventura County resident that drives spends 23 hours per year stuck on the that drives spends 23 hours per year stuck on the 101. We have to do better than that. It's a locally, a tax that's going to stay locally. We're very fortunate here in the city of Camarillo. We have the revenue to at least keep up pretty well in our streets, but many, many other cities in the county don't. It's going to be a real boon to them. We need to work very hard on this. It's going to cost the average taxpayer between about $30 to $50 a year. To me, that's a very small price to pay for a relatively large benefit. It does sunset after 30 years. And please, please, whatever you can do, please go out and talk about the benefits of this.
Thank you. We're going to begin our next question with Tony. And let's talk about housing. A little bit of background, there's about $600,000 in accumulated block grant money sitting in the city of Camarillo, according to the questioner. And the question is, where do you stand on low-income housing in the city? Do you think that there is enough allowed? And also, what is your views on those for the disabled? Is there enough housing needs for the disabled?
Try and cover this in 60 seconds. First of all, with the way open space protection laws are, it's critically important that we, as a city, look to our urban core and provide infill development within our urban core. That's the way things are going to go in the future. That's what we need to focus on now. And by infill, I mean mixed-use development. And looking at parcels that may not have been efficiently used, or have been previously identified for redevelopment. We no longer have a redevelopment agency. We no longer have tax increment financing to utilize. However, we do have some incentives, I believe, that I would pursue, to try to provide additional housing. That additional housing should include both multifamily, as well as low and affordable income housing. There, as you all know, there is a state percentage that is required for providing affordable housing, state requirements. And I believe the city is currently, well, actually, we'll have some comment about whether the state is currently, this city is currently meeting those percentages. But where to look is in our core for that mixed-use development.
Thank you. Kevin, same question to you about low-income housing and housing for special needs.
Well, it's interesting. That $600,000 block grant keeps going down every year. There's a big need for low-income and houses for seniors here. Our housing policy in Camarillo has really tried so, so hard for many, many years here to get the 15% to 20% affordables in any new projects. And I defy anybody to drive around the city and look at our affordable housing and see if there's any difference between the housing that's built in that neighborhood and the affordable housing. We sprinkle them around our city and we make sure that they look exactly the same as any other house in that neighborhood. And that doesn't come easily. We work very, very hard for that. As far as with special needs, the Elacor, there will be some units that are being constructed in the near future that will be able to accommodate some of that. That's been something that this council has been very, very progressive on. We work extremely hard on this. There's a big demand for single story houses, and we're working very hard to accommodate that.
Thank you, Kevin. Same question to you, Jamison. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, thank you. Currently, the city of Camarillo has over 2,000 houses in the pipeline being built. I support smart growth, but I think it's really hard to have smart growth when there's so much uncertainty regarding the future of our traffic ingestion and our water security. So, when I'm on the city council, I will work to slow growth until we have the infrastructure, the ability to support the infrastructure that we have. With that being said, if we do have growth, I think it does need to have an affordability component. And working with people with disabilities, I do know that we do not have enough housing that is accessible as well. But, but I think we need to be really, really careful about the future growth that we do. They say we're going to be done growing in Camarillo within the next six years. So, if we do grow, we need to make sure that that benefits the quality of life for people in Camarillo over profit.
Thank you. Same question to you, Matt. Do you need me to repeat it?
You know, I know about special needs. My son has autism. And there's people that played soccer down there, the fields. And a lot of parents wonder where their kids are going to be staying. And you know, they go on Section 8 vouchers. It can take up to a year or two years to get a place. I know many mansions is working on some projects out here. But you know, here's the bottom line. You know, again, this is your city council. They're supposed to advocate for people. What have they been doing for the last four years? They haven't been advocating for their seniors. Now, they haven't been advocating for people who have disabilities. You know, again, when you have a city council, it's more than just showing up here and having the staff do the research. You should open your mouth. If you want to see a system that works good, go to the park service. You know, I go over there, and I'm going to tell you something. The members on the board, they're always looking for solutions, and they take solutions from people in the audience. The city needs to do more than just talk about it. They need to move forward on it. So, this is something that needs to be brought up at meetings and actually done. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bill, we'll wrap up with you on this one.
Well, for about the last 20 years, the city has required development to provide 15% to 20% of its housing that is planned to be set aside for low and moderate income. Very low, low, and moderate. And that has been done on all projects in about the last 20 years. As a result, we've created about 1,500 houses that are now below market rents, below market values. And we have worked with them. We've worked in second mortgages for, providing second mortgages for, on houses or condominiums. So, we've done a, we've, I think we've done a pretty good job. We've also cooperated fully with the Housing Authority of Ventura County to provide help to them in their conversion of houses or apartments to housing. So, we've done a lot.
Thank you, Bill. And we're going to start with Kevin on this next question. I'm sorry, no, we're starting with Matt. Matt, there's several ballot measures that people are interested in. Measure C, Measure F, and Measure J. Will you please share with us where you stand on each of these? We heard about Measures C and F last forum. That was on the countywide SOAR. And I believe J is on the Camarillo City SOAR. So, tell us where you stand on each of those, and you could tell us why. Matt, you're up first.
On Measure J, I'm for it. Basically, it's for the city. For C, it's for the county and for it. And Measure F, I'm against it. Again, let's talk about who was here eight years ago. There's a lot of people running here, and the council's here. But you know something? I've been going for eight years. And you know who was here in this room? I was. I was the only one here. I was against the Canale Creek project. And you know, the city attorney wrote all the candidates and said, "Oh, no, you can't talk about it. You've got to be good. It'll be a problem." But you know something? I've been an advocate. And you know something? That was a horrible project. And you know what happened? The residents had to come here. And you know, the city council votes on developing all the time. But they said, "If you vote for that, we're going to throw you out of office." But you know what that is? This is another point where they don't listen to the people in this community. You know, the only time things get happen, it seems like, in this world, or in your community, is when you get angry and you come down here. But you know something? The people of Camarillo do not want more development. They don't want the San Fernando Valley in their backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. And up next, we're going to go to Tony on this. Measure C, Measure F, Measure J.
I support Measure J. I support Measure C. I do not support Measure F. The reason I do not support Measure F principally is because the scope and the impact of the school sites exemption, to me, after reviewing the initiatives, are unclear. And that's with respect to the amount of acreage involved. I believe that's it in a nutshell. And my position is very clear on it. I'd like to go back just for a minute because I neglected to answer a question with respect to affordable housing. I do fully support looking at and collaborative efforts with the area agent, area agency on housing, and many mansions on supporting additional housing for young disabled adults, and for disabled adults.
Thank you. Bill, let's hear from you as far as Measure C, Measure F, and J.
I support Measure J because it, well, can keep the urban boundary line, which is what we have agreed to in 1998 with the first SOAR. It allows the city to develop within its boundaries and protects the farmlands around it. I also, I support Sustain VC, Measure F, because I believe that I'm looking at it, and I think it more fits what the farmers are, been talking about, to handle their requirements under the SOAR. It's a SOAR initiative. It just is a couple of different changes in the various components of that and what is required. I just think that if the farmers put it together, I think it's probably more flexible for their agricultural sustainability.
Thank you. Jamison, same question to you on C, F, and J.
I 100% support C and J, as I said in my introduction, and I'll say it again in my closing. But for me, it's more than just lip service because I actually helped with the strategy to get Measure J on the ballot the second time. The kickoff party was at my house. I knocked on doors. I phone-banked. I was at the library and the farmer's market collecting signatures. And I think that's really interesting. Just the other day, Bill Little was saying that he supports SOAR. And if you look at his Facebook page, everything is hashtag SOAR. But at the last debate, I pointed out that when he came on the Ventura County podcast, he listed a whole bunch of reasons why he actually doesn't support SOAR. So, I'm glad to see that he's saying that he actually doesn't support SOAR tonight. But with that being said, I do support SOAR. I'm going to support it in the future. I'm going to work to make sure that it remains in Ventura County. And I'm also spending a significant portion of my own campaign money to make sure that voters know the difference between C, J, and F.
Thank you. Kevin, we'll wrap up with you on C, J, and F.
I support Measure C, and I support Measure J. I don't support Measure F particularly. I think that the voters had to decide one of them. I think that whoever gets the most votes is the one that's going to pass. I have to tell you, from a personal perspective, as a current council member, the SOAR Measure C has made me a better urban planner. And I think if you look at the way that our city has been laid out with our 25-year circulation plan here, and the type of development that we have allowed here, that has been of the highest quality. We've listened to the residents. We've listened to the builders. We've taken into consideration market conditions here. And I think every project that we have built in Camarillo has been worthwhile, and it's held its value unless there's a downturn in the economy. I know one of the best investments I ever made was buying a house in Camarillo.
Thank you. Kevin, we're going to go ahead and stay with you. And let's go a little higher level. Tell us a little bit about yourselves. But this question specifically is, looking at over the next five years, candidates, what is the most critical single issue that you think the council will face? And how will you deal with that? Kevin?
Well, I think one of the most critical issues is going to be water and a reliable and sustainable program for water. We're actually in a very tremendous and a very gruesome drought here. As many of us know that have lived in Southern California, that we all know drought conditions very well. But I have to say, what the city has done is that we kept our tiered water rates in effect even when we didn't have the drought. And that actually allowed us, when the state came down with a, at least 20% mandate to cut back our water, many other cities had to cut back 30, and in some cases, 40%. Because of our tiered rates, we had to cut back 20% here. We're looking for new sources. We're a little bit bogged down in a regulatory process of a desalter here. But we also have a low-flow toilet program and drought-resistant plants.
Thank you. And next up is Jamison.
This is really easy for me because I say it like 100 times a day. We need to work to reduce our traffic congestion, secure our water future, and protect open space. To reduce our traffic congestion, we need to widen the bridges, and we need an auxiliary lane. And I think AA is, AA is the best way to do that. We also need to improve our public transportation. We need a unified public transportation system because, right now, it takes so much time to get from one part of this county to the other. To secure our water future, we need to get this desalter passed. But also, we need a net-zero water policy. Recently, the city of Ventura moved to a net-zero water policy. They're in a lot more difficult strains than we are, but we're going to get there at some point. And so, if something is built, we need to make sure that it is built to reduce the water usage. And if there's no water source, developers have to pay for it. To protect our open space, that's really simple. We need to stop building on our open space.
Thank you. Tony, same question to you. Looking at five years, what do you think's the most critical single issue?
Since mid-July, I've walked several thousand homes, literally, in this city. And we also conducted a survey on our Facebook Council Campaign page. And the results that we've received back are consistent, both as, in terms of receiving input from walking and also over Facebook. As number one is growth and development, and number two is trust and transparency in the council. Those are the issues that are most important to the voters. I think in the next five years, particularly with respect to growth and development, we need to start looking very seriously. We know that we are not going to be able to build outside our footprint. So, we need to look inside. And we need to look from an economic vitality standpoint on what we are doing relative to affording economic vitality within the city core, mixed-use development. We have to balance that, and life is a balance, folks, between that and traffic and water. We need water, continue the water conservation. I'm a proponent of the Pleasant Valley Desalter Project, and those, I believe, are the most important things in the next five years.
Thank you. Bill, same question to you. What do you think's the most critical issue in the next five years?
Well, most of the things that I would have said have been already been spoken about. But I would agree that if Measure AA fails, transportation and the mobility of getting around this county is going to be, in my opinion, probably the one most everyday problem that people will have. Water is going to certainly be an issue, although I constantly, as an optimist, hope for rain, and someday we may have it. And then, thirdly, is growth. That is something we're going to be shifting from large track areas of growth to building in sustainable ways around the core of the city. Maybe re-resurrect the Village Commons project in Camarillo where Ponderosa Shopping Center is.
Thank you. And Bill, we're going to start with you. I'm sorry. Yes, Bill, we will start with you. Matt, did I call you? I don't think I did.
No, you didn't. You left me behind. It's okay. I'm still here.
I didn't leave you behind. I was just showing my age. Matt, go ahead and give us your top priority over the next five years.
You know, there's three issues here, folks. 13, 14, and 15, crime is up. This year, 18 to 33% crime. And what they said, yeah, it's Proposition 47, so they have no solution. I have a solution. You need a bike patrol. You need a police substation. And you need to have monthly meetings. Two, have you noticed in Old Town and around here, you have vacant buildings? They have no marketing plan because, basically, people are using their smartphones, and they haven't come up with a marketing plan. We need a marketing plan, basically, for what we're going to do, those areas. Number three, traffic. Measure AA does nothing. It only provides 20%. It's the most ridiculous measure that's ever been put forth. You know what they don't talk about? VCTC is responsible for ride share. You know how many times they promoted it? October 3rd to the 6th, basically. Ride share is going to be very important. And also, if we have businesses, we can talk to work four days a week. It would help. You know, freight arrives at night. It doesn't arrive in the daytime. So, let's be serious there. But we need to promote more ride share. Thank you.
Okay. Bill, we're going to start with you. But before that, there was a question from the audience on the transportation tax. I guess I said it was a half-percent tax. It's a half-cent, but it's always described usually on $1. So, it does represent 1/2% of every dollar that you spend is the amount of the sales tax. So, it's adding that. I'm looking at these guys, see if I got that right. Okay, I'll say yes. That was the question to me. That's why I don't answer questions. Okay, let's move on. Candidates, want to try and squeeze in two here. If you can do this in a minute, this will be our last question. Number one, where do you stand on term limits for the city council? And number two, for challengers and for incumbents, do you have any occupations or other interests that would require you to recuse yourself because of potential conflicts of interest? And we're going to start this one with you, Bill.
As far as term limits are concerned, I have, basically, have supported term limits at the legislature. And I would support, if the voters approved it, I would support term limits for our council. There is some drawbacks, obviously. I think you need to have an adequate, what is a term limit? And that would probably be, in my opinion, 12 years would be an adequate time to serve. And I would support that as a, as a time to go with 12 years as the limits.
Do you have any outside interests that would disqualify you from any votes?
My, as I said in my opening statement, I, my full life has been engaged in the public process, in government, and in private, helping out nonprofits. And that's, so I have no interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamison, what is your position on term limits? And do you have any outside interests that would disqualify you or potential conflicts of interest?
Unless they try to do something right there and done again, I don't think I have any conflicts of interest. With regard to term limits, I'm admittedly agnostic on term limits. Sometimes I think they do good work. Sometimes I don't think they do good work. But here is my, my main concern about term limits is that if we see turnover in Camarillo, we haven't in a long time, obviously. But Camarillo has absolutely no limit on campaign finance. If a developer wanted to give a candidate $100,000 to run for city council, they could absolutely do that. So, my fear is, if there is more turnover, then special interests, and particularly developers, are going to start buying off city council members and spending enough money to make sure that they get the people they want on the city council. So, what I think needs to happen is campaign finance reform, if we have term limits. And I'm going to push for it even if we don't have term limits. And I'm concerned that it could even be happening this election cycle.
Thank you. Tony, same question to you. What's your position on term limits and in your occupation? Has there been any situations that would be potential conflicts of interest?
As to the first question, I support term limits. I've called for a term limit of 12 years, three terms maximum. For myself personally, I've, I would intend, if I'm lucky enough to be elected to the council, only go for eight years and two terms. That's a personal decision of mine, and that's what I've, that's what I've been advocating. And by the way, when I speak in favor of term limits, I'm not, there's absolutely no disrespect to the incumbents on the council. I thank them for I thank them for their service. They're well-intentioned people. I do note that if you aggregate the total number of years that this current city council has been sitting, the five of them, it's 108 years and 27 terms plus 11 years as a city manager. With respect to occupation, I am general counsel for Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. I would intend to step away from that representation if I'm lucky enough to be elected to the council. I'm not aware of any other conflicts that would disqualify me from voting on any city issues. But of course, if that happened, I would recuse myself. And I am very familiar with conflict of interest laws because I advise clients on it all the time.
Thank you. Matt, same question to you. Where do you stand on term limits and would you have any conflicts of interest?
I support term limits. And let's be honest, why this question was asked? You know why this question's asked tonight? Take a look on Ventura Boulevard and look at a firehouse that's been sitting vacant for 20 years. The people have been off of here. They have excuse. Why is it we don't have a senior center for 12 years? Okay? Ask yourself a question. When we had the Fiesta scandal, you know they have a fraud policy? They never followed it. You know, since that Fiesta scandal, this city council not once has had any kind of reforms to add on their thing. City council members should not sit on nonprofits. You know, I could talk about Habitat for Humanity. They signed a contract. They didn't have a license. They didn't do permits. I could talk about the planning commission. Do you know they appoint people on the planning commission? You want to stop your developers? You know, they have no, they can basically choose the people they want on the planning commission. So you know something? You're asking that question because you're tired of what you see here at city council. They don't get things done. We've been talking about this for years. It's time to have term limits. Thank you.
And Kevin, we'll wrap up with you on this question about term limits and any conflicts of interest presumably from your business.
We have term limits, we have term limits in place. It's called an election. We have an election every two years. I run every four years. Ladies and gentlemen, look up here tonight. I have been challenged every time that I have ran for the city of Camarillo. I run my campaign on a limited budget, so does every other council member that has ever, ever been elected or even run in this city up to this point here. We run citywide. We do not run in neighborhoods. Everybody has a chance to reflect on the job that I do every four years, and I do not take that for granted. The current council members and all the previous council members work very, very hard for the benefit of one thing, and that's the betterment of our city here. The only conflict that I've ever had that I'm aware of, and I work very hard not to have a conflict, is that when the city did decide to fund the trolley, I have a business within 300 feet of it and I was not able to vote on it.
Thank you. That concludes our time for questions. We're going to start closing statements in a moment. But candidates, there was quite a few questions I couldn't get to. I'll just share with you what's on the voters' minds. There was a question asking about which of the incumbents voted on the Springville development and wondering how the challengers would have voted. There was a question about cannabis, regardless of whether Prop 64 passes. The question is, would the candidates actually vote in favor of banning the medical marijuana use and the businesses that would provide that in the community? Other questions about partnering with the Pleasant Valley Rec and Park District on better facilities. Are you familiar with any voter fraud in the city or county? And there was a feeling that candidates didn't really answer the question about using the transportation tax funds. And one more about redevelopment. So I apologize not having enough time to get all your questions in, but they were all excellent. At this time, we're going to begin closing statements. It's one minute. We're going to reverse the order. We'll start with Bill Little.
Thank you. We live in a city that is ranked 23rd best city to live in in the United States. And we also live in the city that's ranked sixth best to live in in California. Think of what we have. In addition to the best climate in the world, we have a city that is financially strong. We have a safe city because of well-trained and well-equipped police department, contrary to one of the candidates. Our city, our city is beautiful. Our streets are well-maintained and city services are responsive to our needs. In addition, we have a world-class library that provides programs for everyone and outstanding schools, including our state-of-the-art New High School. All this just didn't happen. It took, takes planning, foresight, and hard work. Some of the issues I've been working on in the coming four years include the drought and its impacts, traffic congestion, increased economic.
I have to stop you there, Bill. Our next candidate is Matthew Lorimer.
Tonight, you've heard a lot of different issues, but it's the same issues and they've gotten worse. Crime is up 18%. Assaults are up 33. Your freeways are crowded. We've been talking about a senior center for 12 years, a fire station that's empty for 20 years. And people come to city hall because I'm here and they have complaints and they're not basically paying attention to. Things are not working. Four years, look at it. A Fiesta scandal, your fireworks show was a failure. Look at the people in charge. Look at what they brought you. It's not working. You know, it's not about how many fancy flyers you get in the mail. It's the campaign statements that are in this book. Take a look at them. Take a look at who understands what's going on in the city. You know, I don't need endorsements. The only endorsement I need is the people of Camarillo. Do you want change at city hall? Then you need to vote for it. And I'm the only candidate that spent eight years here and I have a good idea of what we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jamison Lingle.
Thank you. I want to end tonight by repeating myself that to me, this election cycle, from the measures to who we elect for county supervisor, to who we elect for city council, will have a dramatic effect on the amount of development we have in the city of Camarillo in the very near future. We have to be careful to only approve smart growth. And it's really difficult to have smart growth when there's so much uncertainty regarding the future of our water, security, and our traffic ingestion. I think it's important that we see a clear contrast between the candidates that spoke today. I think we need to question the sincerity of their positions on SOAR and development. One of the candidates up here claimed to support SOAR very recently, even though they're on the record listing all the reasons they don't support SOAR. Another candidate recently decided to support SOAR, yet they've raised thousands of dollars from developers that are building in San Fernando Valley and Ventura County. I am the only candidate who's been actively involved in the SOAR effort, so I'm asking you to vote yes on Measure C, yes on Measure J, no on Measure F, and yes on Jamison Lingle for Camarillo City Council. And let's save Canal Hill Creek together.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Kevin Kildee.
Yes, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve you, the residents of the city of Camarillo. I've been in a unique place here. I have known every council member that has ever served in the city of Camarillo, and they've all served with distinction. And that also is very factual of our current city council here. I have an open-door policy. I'm a problem solver. I encourage people to call me or come into my store and talk about current city issues, which they do. I keep logs on that. I work for you. The only thing that I am ready and willing to do is for the betterment of our city. We are poised to do some great, great things in the city of Camarillo. Our employment is up. We've got a biotech company that's willing to move here. We've got some expansion in our business districts here. We have great hospitals, which is going to be expanded, great schools and great parks. It's an honor and privilege to serve you, the people of Camarillo.
Thank you. And our last candidate is Tony Tremblay.
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters and for the opportunity to participate this evening. Camarillo is a wonderful place to live, but we can do better. Why vote for me? I'm not an incumbent. I'm committed to changing the way that this city council operates. I have the qualifications to do just that. I know how local government operates and I know how it should operate for the benefit of our citizens.